Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to this morning's study session, Mesa City Council for Thursday, excuse me, Thursday, March 27, 2014. I'd like to excuse Councilmembers Summers and Richens who are unable to be here this morning.
I'm on line.
Is that really a lot darker out there?
No, your eyes are...
Is it because of the new lights?
No, the doc, they're actually...
Oh, they painted it a different color. All these changes that are coming now.
Looking for a fresh start.
That explains that job posting for a new city manager, doesn't it? I mean, why stop here? Why don't we go all the way, okay?
Mayor.
Oh, Scott, you're on the line? I'm sorry about that.
I'm on line, and I did hear that comment.
Okay. Alrighty. So, Councilman Richens is the only one who's not with us today. I apologize to those out in the audience, but because of some scheduling things, mainly I have to leave in a while, and we have some things in executive session that we have to go over. If I could indulge the rest of the council that we moved executive session first, and then we'll come back to the regular agenda. I have a motion from Councilmember Glover, second from the Vice Mayor. All in papers say aye.
Aye.
We are moving to executive session. We'll be back in just a few minutes.[96.32]
And then from the Energy Resources Department.
Good morning, Vice Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
I'm Dan Clevenger, Water Resources Department Director. With me is Carlos Padilla, Assistant Director, and Jake West, Deputy Director. We're here today to present to you our CIP program. You'll note on the first slide here, I just called out four years, 2014 to 2018, and the reason I did that is we went in four-year chunks, so it's still in alignment with what Candace and Ryan had talked about for a five-year program, but I sized this kind of for a four-year bond cycle, so. What we're presenting is two programs, in water and wastewater. Back on February 13th, Council had a strategic planning session and you discussed and saw a lot of, you saw a presentation with several slides related to water and wastewater, and our needs for life cycle replacements, for aging pipes and equipment throughout the city, and then the need to prepare also for economic development and growth, particularly in southeast Mesa. You'll see in this presentation, we've been investing millions of dollars in our infrastructure, and we'll be stressing the importance to continue with that investment. One, to minimize the chance of serious or catastrophic failures in our water and wastewater systems, and two, just to allow us to continue to attract large employers, and again, focus on southeast Mesa, but that could be anywhere in Mesa. And one of the early questions we get when we work with economic development, when we have a large firm coming in, is what, how much water do you have available? And can you handle our wastewater needs? So that's why this is important. I'll start with the water CIP. We've grouped these into three categories of projects. We have life cycle replacements. You'll see the list there, so we talked about the needs at, we'll talk about the needs at Brown Road Water Treatment Plant, pump stations, wells. In red, you'll see a couple of things. These are areas where we feel we have a little bit of flexibility, where we could, they're kind of scalable. We can invest more or less. We want to be as aggressive as we can afford on our aging infrastructure. You look at the second category is the growth and economic development, and that's for both residential and manufacturing. Again, in red is the Signal Butte Plant. The plant had always been to be a 24 million gallon day plant. We did consider a 16, and I'll show you the, kind of the results of that analysis. Obviously, in growth and economic development, we have needs for wells and additional pipes as well. That last bullet is contractual obligations. I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on that, but that's just securing our water rights. We have a shared plant with the City of Phoenix for the Val Vista Water Treatment Plant. There's capital needs there. And then if anybody's been on Lindsay Road, you'll see the large transmission line. There's phases two and three that need to be funded as well. That's coming from that plant. So the category of life cycle replacements and reliability. Here's the investments I talked about. You'll see a range of 20 million to 36 million per year over the last five years. In red is the current year. That's what we anticipate spending, about $20 million on our replacements to make our system reliable. And again, we're talking about the water side. Here's a list, impressive list, I think, of the last five years, making up, showing where those dollars were spent. We have some key replacement or rehab projects, including pump stations, well upgrades, water line replacements. Those are both for, related to work we do with transportation. So they've got a new bond that was passed, and so they'll be doing more arterial street projects. And of course, we have water and sewer in those that we need to address. And we've done quite a bit of work related to light rail along Main Street as well, some of our projects. We installed mechanical dewatering at Brown Road, which was a very valuable project for us. It's working very well, and had some emergency generators installed for improved reliability as well. Just want to give you, show you a few photos here of kind of the scale and scope of these investments. This one's showing some work done at the Pasadena Pump Station. A little bit of work, this is the Brown Road Water Treatment Plant. That's the mechanical dewatering I referenced. Here's a typical water line replacement, but you can see the effort that goes into some of these projects. Here's a well rehab and a re-drill. If you get, then we get into on Slide 11 here. These are the projects that are very important to us, that we need to move forward with in the next consideration for funding. So we've got pipeline replacements in covering about 10-quarter sections, kind of our need there. Some of those pipes are over 60 years old. We have more arterial work with transportation on their projects. We have our upgrades to pump stations, wells, and reservoirs, and then some capital needs at Brown Road Water Treatment Plant. So it's just very important, again, that we reinvest in our infrastructure to maintain the reliability of our system. Here's a map showing where some of that work would take place. If you look at the red boxes, those are our water treatment plants. The one in north-central is Velvist. That's our shared plant, again, and the Brown Road Plant, that is city-owned and maintained. You'll see the red triangles. Those are some well sites, rehab projects on some well sites, and the blue shapes are largely pipeline rehab projects that would take place. Think you've all been by areas and maybe have all had in your districts, one time or another, some water line breaks. This is the kind of catastrophic nature of those. You can see the impact. You've got the flooding, sinkholes, property damage. It damages other utilities, and then, of course, there's impacts to traffic. You'll remember this slide, I think, from your council retreat. If you look at those blue lines, largely in western Mesa, those are our aging infrastructure, our pipes. And then if you look down in the southeast Mesa, you'll see very little infrastructure. So those are some of our capital needs as well. Here's our water line replacement options. So we've got 2,300 miles of pipes that will need to be replaced over 77 to 75 years, over the next 70 to 75 years. Again, it's including a lot of old cast iron pipe, and we have some issues with asbestos cement pipe. We've got a couple of options here. Our original plan was to fund about 35 to 50 million. That would, kind of, that would be ideal, I would say. Option two, to save some money, because we have some, I'd say, significant needs elsewhere. We referenced the two plants, so we have the new Signal Butte Plant, as well as our, on the wastewater side, we have the Greenfield Plant that needs to be expanded. So we've offered a consideration for option two, which is a reduced package, about 20 million. So over four years, we'd fund about 5 million per year.
Mr. Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Just a question on that. If you go with the reduced option, have you measured, or do you have any sense of how you increase the risk for additional failures by deferring those repairs?
Vice Mayor and Councilmember Kavanaugh, it definitely would increase the risk. The more we can replace, the better shape our system will be. Jake, if you have anything additional to offer. We've, we have invested some money recently and have done a better job, and we're getting, we're having fewer breaks. So we know when we invest money that it works pretty well.
Right. If you remember from the 2010 authorization, you authorized us, we did several quarter-section projects and other arterial projects through that. We've reduced our main breaks significantly since we started that program. So this moving forward will do the same thing, we're hoping, but everything's a crapshoot when you're talking about the age of the infrastructure and where it happens. We're identifying in this program the oldest sections of Mesa, where we've got the smaller diameter cast iron pipe. It's critical that we get it out, even though they're not the news-making events. They typically just have leaks, but there's a significant number of them, but they're not the ones that make the headlines. And that's why Dan also mentioned that we still have that older 1960-era asbestos cement pipe that has a history of, when it goes, that's where you saw those pictures of all those sinkholes, those are that types of pipe. But we've gotten a better handle on that. We're doing better on our valve maintenance, but those things will still happen. So ideally, yeah, the faster we get it out, the better, but I think this program is worthy of it. 5 million is, a year is doubling what we're currently doing today, so.
Mr. Luna.
Dan, you know, we have road construction on Broadway. Did we replace our sewer lines throughout there?
I'm not certain.
Which, where on Broadway?
Oh, near Sossaman?
Yes.
Okay.
From Sossaman to Power, roughly, where we just did all the storm drain work on the Inverted Crown, Dan. Yeah, we replaced some lines, that we put some water lines in there. Not so much sewer, but there were water lines replaced in that stretch, not the entire stretch, but in certain areas.
Oh, okay.
We did have.
I'd say that's typical.
Yeah, we did have some issues with the sewer line. But we were making repairs and fixing those while they're there at that time.
So when you're doing any road improvements or construction, you're going in and looking at the sewers as well, right?
And actually, that's what takes the time. Because, you know, it doesn't take long to put the asphalt down. It takes quite a bit of time to do all the underground work. So you'll see, when we do projects today, we do everything we possibly can, because we don't want to cut the new streets when we're done.
Right. And you do power and utility in the whole.
We do water, sewer, gas, storm drain, whatever we have to do.
Okay.
Councilmember, if you'll look, also the bottom of the slide, you can tell we work really hard to coordinate with transportation to get an idea of what their projects are going to be the coming year. And so we try to budget out of, or at least anticipate what dollars we'll need from water to jointly move those projects along.
Thank you.
Okay, please continue.
Okay. Sure. And like Mr. Brady mentioned, that last line there was at 8 million dollars. And we do work closely. We've, we've never done a better job, frankly, I'd say, in coordinating with department, with the other department. I'm not taking that for that.
It was the previous transportation director we just could never get to work with.
It was Catherine. No, I'm just saying, between engineering and the utilities, we've never done a better job over the past few years, frankly, in coordinating and making sure that we don't have any lapses, because it, one, it looks bad, and, you know, for us to go in and have utility needs a year or two years after a new project's done is, it's not wise.
Appreciate that. Good. I see there's two options here. Are we gonna, you want to finish this part of it, and then you'll, or we'll do it at the end?
I asked him to give us options, because you're going to see some other significant projects that are coming in, and we're trying to balance out the overall project. And so I needed some, we wanted to have some flexibility in line replacement, because we have some other large facilities that are going to be, need to be done during this time, as kind of trying to balance all that out.
Very good.
And just so we're clear, let me back up for a minute. When you see this slide, this is Slide 12, I'm back on, that was showing a more well-rounded, well-funded program. So this would change a little bit if we went to the 5 million a year, the $20 million option over four years. So we would hit our highest priorities. But what's shown here, my understanding is, this would be the more, the better-funded option. Okay? So on to, yeah, growth in southeast Mesa, so both residential and manufacturing. Just a brief refresher on how we're set up for water sources in Mesa. If you look at this map, you'll see western map, or western Mesa's in blue. That's served by the Val Vista Water Treatment Plant. Water, it's co-owned by Mason-Phoenix, operated by Phoenix. The water sources are from the Salt and Verde Rivers, and that's via the Salt River Project Canals. And it's supplemented by wells. You'll see the little triangles in there, those are wells. On the other side of Mesa, in purple, that's served by the Brown Road Water Treatment Plant, and that's Colorado River Water, and that comes from the CAP, the Central Arizona Project. Again, wells as needed, particularly in southeast Mesa. We rely heavily on those, and such, which kind of leads into the need for the Signal Butte Water Treatment Plant. So that, and I'll talk about that in just a minute, but that's, that will also be fed. The Signal Butte Plant will also be fed by the CAP Canal. Here just gives you a little snapshot of our capacities. That's the Val Vista Water Treatment Plant first, Brown Road Water Treatment Plant, and the proposed Signal Butte Water Treatment Plant. You'll see, Velvist is a very large plant. It's actually 220 million gallons a day it produces. Mesa's share with that, in that plant, is 90 million gallons per day. Brown Road produces 72 million gallons of drinking water per day. You'll see the current demand is kind of creeping up and getting close. There is some capacity in the Velvist Plant. Signal Buttes are already showing quite a bit of demand. That's covered right now with wells, and whatever we can funnel down and push through the system from Brown Road. So of the 66 million gallons per day demand from Brown Road, up to 10 of that can be kind of forced down to southeast Mesa, but no more. And even that is only done through kind of overpressurizing the lines. It's kind of taxing the system a little bit to get that water down to southeast Mesa. On this slide, again, just to show that what, how we're handling the situation right now, it's all wells and Brown Road for southeast Mesa. I think the council members are all educated enough on wells to know that that's supposed to be more of a supplement and a backup in considerations for drought. It's not wise for us to tap into that, to rely on it. It's just not sustainable, and what's much, much more reliable to use surface water. So we like only to use it as supplement or redundancy, or if for some reason a plant is down, whether it's scheduled maintenance or unscheduled, we'll have the well capacity to utilize in that interim timeframe. So if you look at, then the Brown Road Plant, again, we push about 10 million per day, and that, that's going to diminish over time, because there'll be needs in north and northeast Mesa from Brown Road. So the, up to 10 million gallons a day we can force down to southeast Mesa will become less and less, because it'll be needed in the vicinity of that plant. So we look at the Signal Butte Plant. So the pluses on this, we'd be utilizing surface water. Obviously, it's more reliable than wells. It's a simpler system operation, because you don't have to coordinate how much from each well. It's a lot of moving parts with that. If you're in a plant, you produce much water, you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna produce, and you get it out to the users. And similarly, it would provide redundancy for the Brown Road Water Treatment Plant. So if there's any issues up there, we'd have the capacity to make sure that Mesa's always have adequate supply of water. And that would leave the wells for, primarily for drought conditions. I don't know, I could spend a lot of time on this one, but this shows how we kind of project our needs and kind of size a drinking water plant. The first increase from 2013 to 2014 happened due to the work going on at Eastmark, so we have a lot of households. In addition, we have Apple. Interesting note, if you consider the size of Apple and their water needs, it's on the order of 7,000 households. That would be the equivalent, if you talk about equivalent dwelling units. And you'll see increases over time, as additional work in DMBA Eastmark grows. You'll have Grand Canyon University coming online, and just some additional development. Okay, this is a pretty key slide, and I want to thank Jill. We made her scramble several times. This is as recent as 7:15 this morning, we had to load in a new slide. So she did a great job helping us out. And this really tells the story. So if you look at, is that the one? Is that the right one? So if you look at our water needs in southeast Mesa, let me start with the purple slide, or the purple color. The purple color is that water that we pushed down from Brown Road and see it diminishing over time. So we're relying on that today. And red is wells. So you can see we're starting to tap into, tap into that. So the, we would propose that a water treatment plant down there, Signal Butte, come online in 2018. And we need all that time from today to 2018 to prepare for that. It's a very time-intensive, I guess, to design and build a plant like that. If you look at the, you'll see the blue then in the middle, that's when the plant would come online. The lowest horizontal line, the kind of sloping line upward, that represents the, what we know today. So that includes Apple, that includes all the Eastmark development that's happened to date, plus master plant growth. So that's how we would anticipate the needs to come. You see, we, right now, we're very heavy into the wells, utilizing the wells in the red. As the plant comes online, we're relying less and less on the wells, and we'll have, and less on Brown Road, frankly, because the plant would be online and taking care of the needs. The next green line up would indicate another user on the order of the size of Apple. And you can see how we'd be taxed a little bit to add that, that type of facility to come online now. And certainly, we couldn't accommodate today a very large user. And we've had some folks come in, be very interested in southeast Mesa, that have water needs well beyond Apple. So by building a plant, you'd see that we would put ourselves in shape much better for economic development down there, as well as meeting the needs of the existing folks. The 16 million gallon option, remember, I had this in red early in the presentation. This was just a consideration, hey, can we get by with 16, and then just wait a little bit, and then expand when we need to? Well, you look on here, it's just, it's not going to meet our needs. We're going to get into just heavy, heavy well use. And we also considered to delaying the plant and maybe doing a bond election in the near future, in two years or four years. And it's, frankly, it's just not going to meet the needs down there, so we will be recommending 24. If you look at our capacity needs down, so it's Slide 24. So for sizing with 16 versus 24, we would definitely recommend 24. Timing of the bond election, we see no other option rather than, other than to go out in 2014. So that's what staff would be recommending. Just a cost, so you get a little idea what this costs. Just the plant itself, 24 million gallons a day plant, $123 million. So it's a big price tag, but very much needed. That does not include an additional 66 million to, to have this operate and provide that water, because we need a raw water line coming from the CAP to feed the plant. You'd have a network of transmission mains to get the water out from the plant. You need new wells for redundancy that would, would compensate for issues at the plant, whether it's, again, scheduled or unscheduled maintenance. So again, that'd be the staff recommendations for a 24 MGD plant. There's additional water infrastructure replacement and rehabilitation on the order of $50 million that would be needed as well. That 50 million is including the reduced rehabilitation for our pipelines, okay? So it's not a real aggressive plan on the pipelines. So just give you a feel for that. Any questions on water, yet?
So what I hear you saying, trying to put it in a real quick snapshot, we have west side of Mesa that has the aging infrastructure and lots of needs, and you have a plan for that. And then you have the east side with this economic growth and development and everything that's going out there, and we need a water treatment plant out there to be able to accommodate that. And so as we come to the voters and suggest a bond, to be able to most appropriately address all of these needs, this would be, this is where your recommendation comes from.
Yes, sir. In addition to our contractual obligations, that's it exactly. Those are our three categories.
Good. So Mr. Brady, anything to add to that?
Yeah, I think what we're, the last six or seven years, we've been done, and I think Jake was speaking to it, we've been at the council's direction, been very aggressive, more aggressive than we had in the prior years to really attack the water lines, the aging infrastructure. That's not to say there still isn't some out there. But as you could see in the map earlier, where it showed that where we're seeing the highest amount of growth and opportunities for some large, high-tech industrial areas, it's been to our advantage to have infrastructure in place, but it also has become part of our challenge in order to stay ahead of it. And so frankly, we're trying not to be in a position, my challenge to water and wastewater is, I want to always be in a position where we can offer that and not have to tell a prospect, we can't meet your needs. And so they've, I think they've done a good job of trying to model what that would look like and anticipate. We've delayed doing the, this water treatment plant at Signal Butte. I think we had originally scheduled five or six years ago. Obviously, we recognized the change in the economy. There wasn't enough growth to support it, so we've delayed it probably the last one or two bond elections. Now, obviously, we see Eastmark coming up there, we have Apple. We're able to meet those needs today, but it's kind of, now our position is, we're planning for the next one, the next large subdivision. We hope the next large manufacturing plant. But it, as, you know, as, you know, Beth was pulled off the miracle of, of, you know, First Solar, where she was able to get lines in place before they opened up. We can't build a treatment plant that fast. We need three and a half, four years.
Four years.
Four years to do that. So there's a lot of lead time, it's a big dollar amount. But we think it positions the city well, that allows us to be able to meet the needs of that expanding area. Plus, it allows for the Brown Road Plant to also be able to anticipate the growth that we're seeing in northeast Mesa. At the same time, continuing our commitment of replacing the aging water lines in other parts of the city. We think we, because we've spent the last few years being very aggressive of that, we, I think Jake feels like, you know, he can always spend more money, but I think we can still stay ahead of the curve with what's here in this program. So we're just, what we're going to be recommending to council, and we'll talk about wastewater here in a second, is we really would recommend to council, in order for us to continue the momentum that we're seeing, or providing opportunities to bring in high-tech jobs and allow for development to take place. We need to, this is the year we're believing, or this is the program where we need to go forward with the treatment plant.
Any observations? One I would make is the, the lesson learned from the last six years is making that investment and those improvements leads to the wonderful successes we've had. So it seems to make a lot of sense to go that route, but. So you have a wastewater portion?
Yeah, there's, that's the next one.
It's halftime, so. Moving on to the second half, wastewater CIP. This is set up similarly. We have the same three categories, life cycle replacements, the growth component, and then our contractual obligations. You'll see, we have our, so we have three water reclamation plants, the northwest, southeast, and Greenfield. Greenfield is a shared plant with Queen Creek and Gilbert. So we, we have needs at all of those plants, as well as additional sewer lines, lift stations, odor control, and manhole work. If we talk about growth and economic development, again, in red, you'll see here, we, there's an expansion needed for the Greenfield wastewater plant. We are considering either 10 or 8 million gallon per day expansion. It's currently 16 million gallons per day. Gilbert currently has, they have 8 million gallons per day of that capacity. Mesa has four, Queen Creek has four. With an expansion, Mesa would become the, and we operate this, actually, so it's owned by the three cities and towns, but Mesa operates that plant. What we'll show here in our analysis is how we size that one as well. We knew we needed at least eight, and it does appear that 10 is going to work better, and you'll see that in a following graph. Of course, you need additional conveyance lines to support that growth, to get the sewage to the plant. Contractual obligations, you'll see the sub-regional operating group. You may have heard that referred to as SHROG. That's a group of five cities, including Mesa, Tempe, Scottsdale, Glendale, and I missed one in there.
Phoenix.
Phoenix, huh? Minor detail, right? They own and operate the, operated by Phoenix, the 91st Avenue Wastewater Treatment Plant. That's way out on southern and 91st Avenue, so we have a share of that one as well. So we have contractual obligations for their capital needs out there, as far in, as well as the pipelines that get the sewage there. So the, like I showed on the water side, here's our investments over the last five years for wastewater. That's 3 million to 15 million per year. The types of projects we've been able to accomplish are shown on this slide. So you've got the Southern Avenue Interceptor, you've got projects at both the northwest and southeast plants, sewer and manhole rehabs, as well as rehabs of lift stations and odor control stations. Here are some of our needs moving forward. Got needs at all the plants, frankly. There's process and filter improvements needed, odor control, equipment replacements. On a citywide basis, we have manhole, sewer, and more lift station odor control stations. That's just ongoing forever, rehabs. So those would need to be addressed as well. Here's a map showing those projects that would be needed. You'll see red dots signifying our three plants, two of which are in Mesa, one's in Gilbert, but that's the shared plant, the Greenfield Plant. The dark, the black lines represent sewer work in both west and central Mesa. Again, that's aging infrastructure, nothing new for you. That's where our oldest infrastructure is. The black squares represent lift station odor control projects, and they're kind of scattered throughout Mesa. Those are some of our wastewater needs. Again, just some photos to get you a little, little scale of these projects, what they look like. Here's some sewer rehabs and replacement projects, manhole project here. Here's the disinfection project done at the southeast plant. And then moving on to growth in southeast Mesa, again, as far as wastewater is concerned. You'll see here, we've got the areas served by Mesa's three plants, shown in different colors. Also, way off to the left with a broken line going to it, you'll see the 91st Avenue wastewater plant that we're members of as well. The green, the fat green lines are sewer interceptor lines that help get the, that sewage to the facilities. Here's a slide just showing the capacities of our existing plants. The first one, again, is the northwest plant, a middle one. A middle one up on top is the Southeast and the 91st Avenue. You'll see we have a capacity of 18 million gallons per day in Northwest, with some, plenty of capacity available there right now. Southeast plant, less capacity, but still some. You'll see 91st Avenue. Our Mesa's share is about 24 million gallons per day, so we have a little room there as well. When you get down to the bottom and see the Greenfield plant, again, it's a 16 million gallon per day plant. Mesa's share is only four today. So, and we've met our capacity, so we're, we're there today. So we're on borrowed time, if you will. This slide will kind of show you how we're sizing the expansion for Mesa. And again, our partners are, are moving forward as well. Gilbert needs more capacity, as does Queen Creek. We try to explain this logically here. So if you see the horizontal dash lines, that shows the capacity at the plant at a given time. So today, if you look in 2014, Mesa's capacity is 4 million gallons per day. So if you look at the red line, which again will include our knowns with Apple and Eastmark and Southeast Mesa, you'll see that jump to get us to our capacity today. The red line would continue based on our projections for master plant growth, okay? So you'll see in 2015, 2016, 2017, particularly in 2017, we are above that second horizontal line. What the second horizontal line represents is additional capacity at the plant that our partners are not using today. So we could rent that capacity to get us through that time. But once we get over that line, if you look in on the order of between 2016 and 2018, if we have, our demands for sewer are that high, we'd have no choice but to divert flow because that plant cannot handle the flow. So that'd have to go elsewhere. And where that would go is to, I think we can send some to our Southeast plant, we have some capacity, and we could send some to the 91st Avenue. But the needs in Southeast Mesa kind of show that we need to expand that plant. So if you look at the expansion, so that's the vertical line to get us over, if we expand up to 12 million gallons per day, that's a, that would be an 8 million gallon per day expansion. The next line is 10 MGD expansion. So again, as Chris was talking about, that would get us in the best shape to serve our existing customers and future customers if Mesa were to size their portion at 10 million gallons per day. On that same note, our partners' interests are, I think Gilbert is planning to add four more million gallons per day, Queen Creek two. If we come in with 10, that's an additional 16, which makes it very modular. There's already 16 there today, and that's the, the most logical expansion is to do another 16. So it works out quite well frankly. So our recommendations then would be for a 10 million gallon day per expansion at the Greenfield plant. That costs on the order of 104 million. We still have about 9 million left over from the 2010 bonds, so the need is 95 for the expansion, 95 million. And then like water, there's needs for infrastructure replacement on the wastewater side, and we're showing a need on the order of $30 million over the next, you know, four or five years. That's my last slide. Do you have to take any other questions?
Any questions? Mr. Summers? Okay. Mr. Brady, just looking at the time, I know a couple of council members have some obligations. Do we want to put some of this off for later?
Yeah, well, we have energy and, we can come back. Oh, when are we, the only, when are we going to Audit and Finance?
Seven.
April 7. Okay, so we have another meeting we can hit before then? Okay.
Vice Mayor, we're just trying to make sure we get these presentations to you before we show up at Audit and Finance. So we can reschedule. We probably, next Thursday?
Thursday for Energy.
Energy, is that, if that's okay?
Yeah, I did, council members, you okay with that? Get a little time?
This is probably the, I mean, we'll, we'll, we have some energy things, but if we can, we want to make sure you had this and can absorb this, because then when we go to Audit and Finance, we're going to come back and talk a little bit about the impacts on rates and going forward and how that all began.
Oh, that'd be good to know.
Okay.
Okay, so then we'll go ahead and have that energy portion next week. Thank you very much for this presentation. No other questions. We appreciate it. I know a lot of great work is occurring out there. Appreciate it. Okay. If everyone's agreeable, maybe we'll drop down to just Job Order Contracting, item two. Did anybody have any questions on those projects?
No.
If not, do we want to try and get in the presentation on the quiet zone or catch?
It's up to you. We can.
We can do a quick one. I think you'll find, several of us have been through it before.
Okay, let's do that one then. Let's go with item 1B here. Presentation, discuss and provide direction on the proposed railroad quiet zone. Welcome.
Remember, just saying yes.
Great. You'll let us know who you are and.
You betcha. I say still, good morning, members of council. My name's Lenny Hume, interim transportation director. With me is El Zubi, our senior transportation engineer. Back in October, we came to Sustainability and Transportation Committee and reviewed quiet zones. We had requests from a citizen, and subsequently more citizens requesting what it would take to get the city to have the trains not blow their horn as they cross the crossings throughout Mesa. So we gave a presentation to the committee, and they asked us to go back and get some more information and do some more research. So we're going to do a quick little presentation of what this is, what's it about, and get direction from council. So what is a railroad quiet zone? Basically, the engineer, the operator of the train has to sound his horn at all grade crossings, and every one of the grade crossings in Mesa are at grade, and they have to sound their horn during, during the day and at night. And then there are some exceptions. So what a quiet zone does is it allows agencies to work with the Federal Railroad Administration, and in this case, Union Pacific Railroad, to come up with designs so we can eliminate the train horn going off. Just kind of giving you an idea how loud the horn is, about a 500-foot radius, so horn's about 90 decibels. So that's comparable to a chainsaw or a very loud lawnmower. So it is, it can be quite annoying if you live in near the vicinity of a crossing. So just kind of give you a little bit of background. In 1994, Congress directed the Federal Railroad Administration to come up with some rules for agencies to, to try to work on this quiet zone. And in 19, or in 2005, the Federal Railroad Administration came up with some rules on how we could go, as an agency, to go about getting a quiet zone. There are three types of quiet zones. There's a pre-rule, before 2005, obviously that makes sense. There's a partial quiet zone, which is based on a specific time, typically 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. And then there's a full quiet zone, which is what we're asking for council's direction How we go about getting, establishing a quiet zone? The Federal Railroad Administration has developed a calculator for us to, to evaluate our existing railroad crossings and come up with a risk index. And what we have to do is it includes it with the horn being blown, it allows us to set a benchmark, so we can do safety measures at our crossings to improve the safety, which decreases the index, which allows us to work with the railroad to not have them blow their horn during the day, or anytime during, any activities going on down through there. So we sat down, did the benchmarking with the calculator, evaluated some type of supplemental safety measures. These include additional medians, possibly gates, and various other things. And we took a look at the whole city. And it works to our advantage to take a look at the whole proposed quiet zone throughout the whole city of Mesa, basically from Dobson to baseline, or baseline to Dobson, as the railroad goes throughout the city of Mesa. And it works to our advantage because any safety improvements we do at one crossing actually averages over the whole network. So we've gone through and did some evaluations of some of the areas we, we could do improvements at. Again, these are typically medians and extensions of medians that we don't have out there. And we're very fortunate because most of our crossings have medians, but we have some of, we need to add some stuff to. And we also have, most of our crossings have some type of gate process. So I'll go through a couple of slides to show you some of the locations, some of the improvements we're recommending, and give you a rough, rough idea of what it would cost. The baseline road crossing, that actually has four gates in this picture. It has, it has a median, however, it's about five or 10 feet short of meeting the requirement. So we were looking at maybe doing a small addition to that median, which would be on the east side of the tracks. Another one is Southern Avenue. There is no medians there. What you do is, the reason you put a median in is it prevents people from driving around the gates and allows the, the operator of the train to feel comfortable that nobody's going to be crossing that, so they can not blow their horn. Southern Avenue doesn't have any medians. We were looking at putting, putting some of those in to address this, to address the quiet zone. There is a little bit of conflict with some left turn movements. Obviously, there'd be some public involvement in discussing how we would be able to put the medians in there and still, because they have to go a certain distance, L is at 100 feet, 100 feet, and that kind of gets into a couple of left turn movements we have in that area on Southern Avenue. Dobson Road, it's just a minor extension or improvement at the median there, which doesn't affect anybody at this point. So recommendation is to have council give us direction on a full quiet zone. We have, we estimate approximately 250,000. We've already done, identified that in two CIP years. And why two CIP years? It does take some time. We've learned from our neighboring cities some of the tricks to get through, get the process through faster, and we're going to be working on those if council gives us direction to proceed with this process. So we're seeking direction. We will be contacting all the agencies involved, you know, to get the supplemental, get the implementation of the safety measures, the medians, and various other things, and also file our application with the Federal Railroad Administration.
Wonderful. Mr. Kavanaugh?
Thank you. I know council staff for the last, actually, three or four years has been looking at this issue, and, and some of the cities have had horror stories in terms of the amount of money that it costs to establish the quiet zones. So I really appreciate the research that you've done identifying these, these locations, because this is much less than I ever expected to be to address this many locations, because other cities have spent 100, you know, several hundred thousand dollars on one location. And here you've got all 10. So, and I think it's, it's also a credit to good transit planning in the past of having the medians there and ensuring that the gates are there. So it's much less for us to do to accomplish something that I know for any of us who live or travel in West Mesa, we've been jolted by the horns, almost vibrated right out of your bed. But I'm hoping that the council would give direction to approve.
Wonderful. Mr. Glover?
I want to thank Lenny and his staff and all the city staff that have been involved, because you've been really thorough. This was first brought to me by some residents that live in my district, and so when you started looking at it, I really appreciate the hard work that you've done, and I echo Councilman Kavanaugh's words. And I'm hoping that we move forward as well.
Wonderful. Okay, good. Mr. Summers? Any feedback? We may have lost him.
No, I'm still here.
There you go. How do you feel about this?
Tired.
About this?
Oh, about this? I'm, I'm fine. This, pardon the pun, sounds good.
Okay, wonderful. Mine also. Yeah, I believe, yes, sir?
Vice Mayor, council, what we'll do is we'll, what we're hearing is direction to move forward with the application. And then in the upcoming budgets, then we'll allocate, we'll bring that for your approval in the budgets to, for these dollars to address these improvements. Is that?
Yeah, that's fine. And just to follow up, Vice Mayor, we're also looking at some valued engineering in some of the medians and extensions. We initially thought of digging up the street, and we don't, Southern Avenue, we're very sensitive with the activity out there, so we're looking at some other, other operations or activities we can do, say extruded curb and various other things, and we might be able to do that. You don't see much disruption to traffic, and we can proceed forward with that.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Okay. Thank you for that presentation. We appreciate it. We, I think we covered Job Order Contracting on the next item. Acknowledge of receipts and minutes of various boards and committees. We have a motion, second, all in favor? Aye. Here reports on meetings or conferences attended. I think we'll pass because of the time constraints. And then, Mr. Brady, scheduling of meetings and general information.
Just real quickly, to remind everyone that their, the Falcon Field Airport Open House will be this Saturday, March 29th, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Parking and admission are free, so we invite everyone out to Falcon Field this weekend. The next day's session will be Thursday, April 3rd. We'll see you then. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Motion for adjournment? We have a motion and second, all in favor? Aye.